Oh, I could look at this for the time. Seven o'clock. Okay. Yep. Where's my blue sheet? This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 8th, 2020, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 8th, 2020, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphones. And assistive listening devices are available. John, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? John Maron.
Just start us.
Just start us.
I'll just start them. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mayor Brill Mittler?
Here.
Councilman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Hale?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Borough Administrator Holver?
Here.
Okay. As many of you know by now, the Highland Park Library has a new director, and her name is Kate Jagger. Kate, are you here? I hope you'll all stop by and meet her. She's going to be having an open house. To meet her on the 26th, is it?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. So please stop by and meet her. She's got lots of really good ideas for new things and lots of changes for our library.
Mayor, if I may, just one second. Kate, welcome. I've been attending the meetings with you as the executive director. I see the new life. I see the actual joy that's going on. I hear that it's somewhat infectious in the library staff as well, and I welcome you.
Okay. So we have some very moving proclamation in honor of a longtime Highland Park resident and artist who we lost about a week ago. And on behalf of the governing body, I have a proclamation to read and present in honor of Bill Giacalone. Is his family here tonight? Please. Meet me at the microphone, please. Bill was one of our treasures, and you shared him with all of us for many, many years. I'd like you all to hear a little bit about Bill from this proclamation. Whereas the Borough of Highland Park takes pride in the many established artists who call the borough home and engage in creative activities here, inspiring joy, reflection, artistic expression, and civic engagement among residents and visitors to our community. Whereas Bill Giacalone was an award-winning painter, illustrator, and sculptor, resided in Highland Park for over 50 years -- sorry. Trying to keep it together. And was an active member of the local art scene and the Highland Park Arts Commission. Whereas Bill Giacalone was born in New York City and moved at a young age with his parents to Stilton, New Jersey, where he attended the Ferrer Modern School and showed artistic talent at an early age, with his drawings being published when he was six in the Modern Schools newspaper, Voice of Children. Whereas Bill attended New Brunswick High School, then joined the U.S. Navy in 1943, serving on destroyers in the Atlantic and Pacific Theaters. He participated in the Okinawa and Iwo Jima campaigns and was among the first U.S. servicemen to view in person the devastation of the atomic bomb in Nagasaki. Inspired by the events of the Holocaust in 1947, Bill served as a scout in the Palma in the fledgling state of Israel, an experience that inspired his artwork throughout the rest of his life. Whereas Bill married his wife in 1955, and together they raised three children in Highland Park while he worked as a commercial artist, illustrator, and art director. He also painted prolifically and illustrated many storybooks and school books. His work was featured on a number of occasions in the Highland Park Public Library and in other local venues. Whereas Bill was a three-time winner in the Technicraft Corporation competition, won second place in the mixed media category of Middlesex County's 2018 Senior Citizen Art Contest, and exhibited his works nationally and internationally. And one of his pieces is hanging in my office here. Whereas Bill passed away on February 24th at the age of 97, creating a painful loss in his family, the arts community of Middlesex County, and the town of Highland Park. Whereas the Berry-Giacalone family will be holding a memorial to Bill at the Reformed Church of Highland Park on Saturday, March 26th. Now -- 28th, you're right. Now, therefore, I, Gail Brill Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby extend our sincere condolences to the Berry-Giacalone family and all his many, many friends, and offer tribute to his many works of inspired artistic expression and human kindness. Thank you for sharing him with us. So this is for you. Do you want to say anything?
We are -- this is very timely. This happened -- we found out about this prior to him getting ill, and we are beyond moved. We are thrilled to have shared him with all of you. I know that he is inspired and touched so many, and we hear stories from bus drivers to people at checkout, how important he was to not only them but to the community. And we thank you for taking such good care of him. I live about an hour away, and I knew that one time he fell, and somebody -- three people came running to pick him up. And he was as much yours as he was mine, and I just am so moved, and thank you all so much for this honor.
And now continuing in the celebration of the arts, and as I just told you all, Bill was awarded and won prizes for his artworks since the age of six. This is -- March is Youth Art Month, and I'm hoping that Maggie Whalen and Jess Wu are here tonight? Are either of them here?
Jessica.
Where is she? Ah, okay. All right. Josh, would you like to join me as the representative to the Arts Commission?
Excuse me, ma'am. Ma'am? Camera.
Okay. Before I read this, this young lady here is about to make Highland Park an even more beautiful place. Jess Wu is a member of the Highland Park Arts Commission, and she has been commissioned to paint a mural on one of our --
Could we open this door? A lot of people are outside, and we can't be in the proceedings.
Where's the police?
Can you please open it?
You have to ask for the police to --
The police?
Yes. Captain Curbelo, I, you know, kind of tied up right now. Okay. Woodbridge Avenue, which has not had a lot of attention paid to it artistic-wise in a while. Most of our murals are on Raritan Avenue. Jess will be painting this beautiful mural on the side of one of the buildings in Highland Park on Woodbridge Avenue. And so Jess, you will represent the town's youth as I read this proclamation, and I give it to you to share with the other young people in town who are involved in the arts and beautifying our community. Whereas -- whereas art education develops students' creative problem-solving and critical thinking abilities, art education teaches sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities. Art education gives students a deeper understanding of multicultural values and beliefs. Art education reinforces and brings to life what students learn in other subjects. Art education interrelates students' learning in art production, art history, art criticism, and aesthetics. And whereas our national leaders have acknowledged the necessity of including arts experiences in all students' education, and whereas March is officially recognized as Youth Art Month, now, therefore, I, Gail Brill Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby proclaim March 2020 to be observed as Youth Art Month. And Jess, thank you for representing the creative young people in our community. Do you want to say anything? Okay.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, I'm really grateful for being here in Highland Park. I only moved here about seven years ago, but Highland Park's art community is truly vibrant and pretty amazing. I'm really glad I joined the Arts Commission. John, over there, I see you. But it's been a really awesome opportunity, and I can't wait for this mural to go up, honestly. I'm a senior, so I'm leaving this year, but I hope this is something that I'm contributing.
And she's going to MIT. All right. We go on to our council reports now. And so this week, I'll start with reports on my right. It's Councilwoman Kim Cho Han. Yes, there you are. Would you please start us off?
Yes. I don't have much. I know everyone is waiting for public comment, but I do want to --
Can't hear you, Stephanie.
I don't want to go that close. I do want to announce that Gives a Hoop, Highland Park Gives a Hoop, has opened up their summer camp scholarship program. If you or someone you know qualifies for free or reduced lunch, they also qualify for our summer camp scholarship. The application deadline is March 10th, or until it's full for the scholarships. You can stop over at Borough Hall to pick up an application, or you can always email myself, and I will put you in contact with the right person, or email you over an application as well. My contact information is on the Borough's website. And I do want to mention, we're all afraid of the coronavirus. As you see, the Lysol wipes, and I have Lysol in my bag, but it's like everyone else has been saying, wash your hands, coughing your sleeve, and we shall survive this as well. And that's my report.
Thank you, Stephanie. Councilman Hale, do you have a report?
Not this evening, madam.
Okay. Councilwoman Welkowitz, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief one, and excuse me, I haven't been feeling well. This is going to take a little while to go away. It is not the coronavirus. Just one item to report, please. This year, Highland Park has been awarded over $76,000 for Community Development Block Grants, which is a huge increase from last year and the past couple of years. We're very happy about this. The list should be circulated on what the items are going for, but again, Department of Aging for senior outreach and for the bus transportation. Main Street is getting money for Streetscapes. Department of Rec is getting money for the summer camp program, and also Community Youth Outreach Program, and the Food Pantry is getting some funding as well. So we're going past that tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
I'm going to suspend my report because I can see everyone in the room is anxious to speak. However, just want to give you a brief update. The mayor and I will be meeting on Thursday with representative from New Brunswick, from the county, regarding the coronavirus. As Public Safety will be providing you information on our website, and more information to follow. So stay tuned, and we'll keep you posted and keep everyone safe. Thank you.
Councilman Fine, do you have a report?
I do not have a report tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Council President, do you have a report?
Just very briefly, if I may, Mayor. In -- with regard to public works, anybody who has seen the sad tale of trail left behind the street sweeper know that it needs repair. It's $250,000 to replace, but I worked with Superintendent Mike. We found a way to repair and upgrade them with a company that does it for about $40,000. It doesn't make it pretty, but it completely refurbishes it, so we're working on that, as well as exploring more maintenance options with a neighboring town. The Native Plant Sanctuary will be having a cleanup on, I believe it's March 8th, and other meetings. The Environmental Commission meets tomorrow night at 8:00 at the Environmental Center, and STACK meets next Wednesday. I'd just make a note with regard to Bill Giacalone. We all feel his loss. I used to volunteer my services to schlep his artwork around in my pickup truck. I've known him for years, and I see many members of the art collective and the art community in the audience, and every one of us knows the intimate relationship with him as he would just point the tiniest bit of a finger to the tiniest color and correct it, and suddenly made that artwork stand out. Sometimes would actually break your heart, the way that he could see color and vision and shape and line would seriously bring you to your knees at times. And he was known throughout New Jersey and the East Coast for that. Finally, I'd like to congratulate Jessica Wu. The young generation showed at the Open Studios last year with me, one of the older members of the arts collective, and we had a delightful time sharing artwork back and forth between sculpture and painting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Just two brief items. The first, I just wanted to give an update on our ever-present deer management work. You know, we've done a survey and a count of deer in town with that report in hand. We're meeting with the Division of Fish and Wildlife along with some of our neighboring communities, including the county, the Rutgers Ecological Preserve, and Piscataway in early April, to discuss if there's a way to collaborate on management, which would be a precursor to our community meeting that we've been talking about. So that's scheduled for April 2nd, I believe, so I hope to have more to report in the coming weeks. The only other one is not a -- I don't like it, but since I have such a big audience, I'm going to mention it. The water and sewer bills are hitting the mail, so just keep your eyes out for them. I know it's one of those bills we lose track of, so you can check the website as well to get your -- if you want to get your payment over with. They're due at the end of the month. That's it.
Thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I have a few things. First of all, last weekend, we held our now very famous Park Partners Program, where residents actually get to vote on ideas conceived by some of our other residents to help improve life in Highland Park. And there were a total of 16 applicants for the grants, and five of them received a Borough Awards of $2,000 each, so that they could actually make their dreams come true. And you all, 338 of you, are the ones who voted on the winning items, and I'd like to just give you an update on them. Oh, and by the way, this year, there was a sixth winner because my mayor's teen advisory council decided to raise money themselves in order to help fund a sixth project, and the one they selected was the one that was put forward by Penn Stock, and I'll tell you a little more about it as I go through this. The winners are the Cave After School. It's a free-of-charge project of Who Is My Neighbor for middle-school youth in 6th through 8th grades. The Open Space Partnership, a collaboration between the Highland Park Meadows and the Highland Park Native Plant Sanctuary, and they will undertake some new initiatives. The Robotics, promoting STEM diversity, a project of the Highland Park High School Robotics Club, which will educate children about science, technology, engineering, and math, STEM. The Highland Park School's Music Renaissance, a project of the Highland Park High School Music Department, which will send high school choir band and orchestra to compete in the World Heritage Festival in DC. Raising Hands Tutoring is a nonprofit that provides free reading tutoring by certified dyslexia tutors to low-income students throughout Highland Park. And the Penn Stock Program, which was awarded their grant by the mayor's teen advisory council, won for their Towards Zero Waste with Husky, a project of Penn Stock Coffee, and it will enable Penn Stock Coffee Shop to become an officially registered and operating Husky swap location to eliminate nearly all of their disposable hot cup usage. So congratulations to all the winners. Additionally, several of my council members have spoken about the coronavirus. For me, this was Coronavirus Day. I was at the county with the Borough Administrator this afternoon, where they told elected officials and Borough Administrators from throughout Middlesex County what their plans were and how they were prepared. There were representatives from all the areas, hospitals, as well as the Middlesex County Health Department. And just to give you some of the things that they mentioned, they were doing tabletop preparations. They are projecting a shortfall in pharmaceuticals, because many of the components in our pharmaceuticals come from China. They are going to be forwarding the protocols that they are asking mayors and BAs to follow in each of their communities to all of the elected mayors. And the CDC has sent protocols to first responders and first aid squads, so I'm sure our first aid squad is following those. And they asked that we get our health commissions involved. And as Councilwoman Foster Dublin mentioned, we will be meeting next week with Public Safety and a representative from our Board of Health to discuss how we are going to prepare here. Then later in the afternoon, I participated in the governor's update on coronavirus and where we are, and I just want to share some of the things that he and the Commissioner of Health shared with mayors and elected Assembly and Senate people. Number one, they want us to know that as of today, there are no confirmed cases in New Jersey. Testing for the COVID-19 has been approved in New Jersey by the CDC, so that is going to reduce the amount of time it takes from when someone is tested to when they get results. So they were very happy about that. The state is taking very seriously this possible threat, and they're focusing on preparedness and resiliency. All municipalities should be prepared, and that's what we're working towards. They did want to say that at this point, the risk in New Jersey appears to be low. Person-to-person spread is possible but unknown. The coronavirus can cause pneumonia, and that has landed several of its victims into hospitals in other areas. New Jersey has a 24/7 call center that it operates, so any residents or elected officials who have questions about coronavirus in New Jersey can call them. That coronavirus is currently present in at least 67 international locations. They have updated testing criteria here in New Jersey, and includes, first of all, travelers to certain countries will be tested, and anyone who's hospitalized in New Jersey for pneumonia will also be tested. They urge that all residents follow everyday smart procedures. Wash your hands, preferably with soap, but with another alcohol-based rub is fine. Use alcohol-based rubs. Stay home if you are sick, and please don't touch your face. And we will follow up with all of you after we start having our meetings with our team here. Finally, we have many volunteer organizations in Highland Park that do lots of good things for a lot of people. On March 21st, Saturday, March 21st, starting at 8:30 PM at the Highland Park Community Center, I will be holding my first-ever mayor's main event, which is put together to help us raise money for HP Gives a Hoot, the Food Pantry, and other volunteer organizations in Highland Park. If you'd like more information on this, I'm happy to give it to you, but you should know also that there will be a performance that night. It is going to be the -- a performance of --
Murder mystery.
A murder mystery, thank you. When Norma Desmond's -- at Norma Desmond's -- A murder mystery, thank you, when Norma Desmond's, at Norma Desmond's Palatial Manor, and this is being performed by Rock Contour Radio. If any of you have not yet been privileged to see one of their performances of 1940s, 1950s movies or radio shows, you will really enjoy this treat, and dinner will be provided. And that's my report. Now, we are about to go into our first public discussion session. There are a couple of things I want to say. First of all, the first session is currently limited to twenty-one minutes in total, and that's our standard. Each speaker, please speak for no more than three minutes, so we can get as many people in as possible, and I am going to ask the audience to refrain from outbursts. Please be respectful of other opinions, listen to what people have to say, and we'll be able to move forward in a much more humane way. So at this point, I'm going to ask the Borough Administrator to be our timer for the evening, and Terry, if you, if everyone would please watch Terry, she will let you know when the three minutes are up.
And I will say "time," I'm not trying to be rude.
Okay, so, given that, I'm going to ask also anyone who speaks to please state your name and address. So please, first.
Before I begin pursuant to ordinance number 920, I request that the item 30-20-105, the resolution...
Do you have a name and address, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, I was just going to...
I'm sorry.
Andrew, Andrew, I'll do the talking for that.
My name is Ira Minson, at 143 North Fifth Avenue.
Thank you, Ira.
As I was saying, we request that, that I request that 320105, the resolution condemning all forms of anti-Semitism be taken out of the consent agenda and be discussed and voted on separately. Now for my remarks.
Wait, hold on, when you make a request like that, I have to ask the council to make a motion to remove that item from the consent agenda if you, if anyone wants to, is that correct?
Well, I think there could be a consensus of the council to remove it, if that's what you'd like to do, and obviously, folks are here to share public comments, so you might care to do that.
Okay, do I, does the council want to remove, which item number is it?
320105.
320105.
Madam Mayor and Mr. Attorney, it doesn't preclude discussion or allowing people to discuss this, to have this stay in the consent agenda. We can still have the discussion of this, the public discussion can still go without removing this, correct?
You could have the public discussion, but if it's removed from the consent agenda, you would vote separately on that item.
So, wait, just to be clear, in the first portion, and I didn't say this before, of the public discussion, that discussion is limited to anything on the agenda? So discussion can be held, to Matt's point, I believe, discussion on that item can take place now?
Seven people.
Well, currently, that is what it is.
And we're asking that it be taken out of the consent agenda, so that you can hear from the community?
Mayor, I'd ask that you...
Wait, wait, excuse me, John, John, please. Okay, so I need a consensus from the council.
No, you just need one council member.
That's not what the Borough Attorney said.
Mayor, I'll move to remove the resolution from the consent agenda.
Wait, wait, consensus?
I need a second.
Oh, I need a second and then consensus?
You don't.
Do I have a second?
Excuse me, my understanding, according to your agenda, you only need one council member to ask that it be taken out of the consent agenda, and then it's separately considered.
Is that true, Borough Attorney?
No, the comment is correct. The agenda does say that if a council member wishes to remove something from the consent agenda, then the matter should be removed from the consent agenda. I guess the mayor is asking for a consensus of the governing body to do so, so that we could hear comments either now or later.
I have a question regarding that. So if it's taken out now, they still can, the three, they would still be allowed three minutes to discuss it, and then open session, they can discuss as much as they want?
Well, no, we have second, the second open session is also limited.
Yeah, but it's a longer, it's a longer slot of time that people would have to discuss.
Yes.
Well, with that said, I would agree to separate it from the first, from our first open public discussion and put it to the second one.
Well, I just want to be clear, I'm not debating that, but I just want to be clear that the second public comment session that you were referring to comes after the vote. Oh, okay.
Changed my mind.
So...
No, if it's taken...
I may move to extend it, extend the discussion.
To 36.
36. Mayor, I think as a compromise, there are a number of people to speak. I recognize all the comments that have come in. I recognize that we have heard these comments before, many of the emails repeat those comments. I recognize that everyone is highly divided on this, for whatever their reason. I would move to extend the public discussion to 36 minutes to allow more speakers.
So, so you're talking about extending this open...
Yeah, by roughly, yeah, by 50%, roughly.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'd second that.
Okay.
You mean this first one?
This first one.
This first one.
Okay. And is that in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay. So Borough Administrator?
Just give me a second to calculate 36 minutes. Someone help me. Eight, what time will this end? I'm just trying to figure out.
Thirty-six minutes after the first...
I know, but I need to know what time on the clock.
Oh.
What time is it? It's twenty, it's 22/8.
I can't do it now. Thirty-six is hard for me.
Okay.
23.
Okay.
Eight sixteen, that's what I wanted, thank you.
Okay.
Eight sixteen, and now we can go three minutes.
Okay, so, Ira, you're on.
Okay. I regret to say, this proposed resolution is racist, it's dishonest, and it's divisive. How is it racist? This resolution's only reference to the non-Jewish communities in Palestine is to characterize them as terrorists. It sounds like Donald Trump is calling all Mexicans rapists. The resolution recognizes only a Jewish right of self-determination, but not an equal right for Palestinians. That is simply racist. How is it dishonest? Your resolution cites to the Balfour Declaration, but have you ever read the Balfour Declaration, the three paragraph statement issued by the British Foreign Secretary in 1917? Do you even know that the Declaration called for a Jewish homeland, but also stated it being clearly understood that nothing shall be done which may prejudice the civil and religious rights of existing non-Jewish communities in Palestine? Your resolution cites to the UN Special Rapporteur's report, but have you even read that report, which states that international law recognizes boycotts as constituting legitimate forms of political expression, and that nonviolent expressions of support for boycotts are, as a general matter, legitimate speech that should be protected? The Special Rapporteur protects boycotts, you condemn them. How is it divisive? Open your eyes to what you are doing to our community. This isn't a resolution that addresses the threat of anti-Semitism. This is a resolution that has more paragraphs supporting Israel than any other single issue. One brief mention of the white supremacists, who are the real threats to Jews in the United States, New Jersey, and Highland Park. Five paragraphs defending Israel. Your resolution labels as anti-Semitic any boycott that seeks a single state in the Middle East for the Jewish, Christian, and Muslim residents of Israel and Palestine. But not being a Zionist does not make you an anti-Semite. At the same time that the moderate and progressive Democratic presidential candidates boycotted the pro-Israel AIPAC Conference, you...
Please, I ask for people not to do that.
And I ask that this not be held against my time. My time, my, my remarks are three minutes, so I timed it. So at the same time that the moderate and progressive Democratic presidential candidates boycotted the pro-Israel AIPAC Conference, your resolution takes the side of the minority in our community, who side with the Netanyahu-Trump forces that blatantly ignore the Palestinian right of self-determination. Your resolution drives a wedge between the moderate progressive residents of our community, who care about free speech and the rights of both Jews and non-Jews in the Middle East, and those who care more about protection of Israeli policies than they do about democratic rights in our community. A council resolution should condemn any actions, verbal or physical, that attack Jewish residents and visitors to Highland Park simply because they are Jewish. A resolution should unite all who can be united around the important goal of protecting our citizens. The proposed resolution fails to achieve either of these goals, and again, will only serve to divide, not unite, our community. I urge you to reject the proposed resolution and propose a clean resolution that unites, not divides us. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Excuse me, can you read the resolution? You didn't begin by reading it. We didn't use... Somebody, please read the resolution again, so we can...
There should be a copy of it someplace.
In the binder?
In that blue book right there.
We don't need 10,000 copies of the resolution. No, I'm just saying, it's in the book, but I didn't know. So much for the old people here.
Well, I don't know what you guys will do.
No, I'm not saying you, somebody to speak.
John, are you ready?
John Kovak, Third Avenue.
Okay.
We have here in town Police Directive 42, which expresses disapproval of threats coming out of Washington intended to sow fear in the lives of immigrant families, noting that no family should live in fear in America. The directive limits police cooperation with federal authorities. In the same spirit, the council passed an inclusive community resolution intended to protect Highland Park immigrants. In light of a shocking increase in anti-Semitic hate and violence that has traumatized Jewish communities nationally, statewide, and locally, we ask the council to show similar solidarity and solidarity and concern with us. The council should not fear to express disapproval of the reprehensible BDS conduct set forth in a resolution, despite the objections of those who claim this has nothing to do with our town, while they simultaneously assert it makes them feel singled out. That some feel singled out shows indeed that this has much to do with Highland Park. We have heard plenty of free speech from those who claim their voices are being suppressed. There was the finger-pointing professor who accused Israel of making Arabs pay for Nazi crimes, fulminating against Jewish self-determination. He threatened a really bad day when he owns his anti-Semitism. There was the Rutgers SJP leader who claimed that Israel's racism, which he compared to our police department, enables Israel to seek complete and utter extermination of Palestinians. There was the JVP member who claimed that the creation of Israel was a racist act and a historic mistake. None of these people will be less vocal if this resolution is passed. In fact, they are threatening aggressive future action. But let us not be deluded or intimidated. A BDS group targeting the Highland Park Library, targeted the Highland Park Library because of the large Orthodox community here, similar to those recently targeted, with assaults, terrorism, and murder. Jewish Voice for Peace demands to inflict upon Highland Park and the world the genocidal ideas that Israel should have been an abortion, and that the world will be far better when it is eliminated. How does this involve Highland Park? Jews are often portrayed as apes and pigs by Hamas leaders and others. Here is a photo depicting Jews as pigs. This photo was on the Facebook page of a leader of the JVP group that brought Goldberg Bashir to our library to teach hate to our children. And here, in a Facebook photo posted by the JVP Central Jersey, is that same individual, Yu Shu, standing with Sam Friedman, the man who told his council that Israel is a historic mistake, and where are they? At a JVP meeting at the Reform Church in town, where the Israel-bashing pastor Seth Capersdale welcomes them. We strive to condemn hate and to preach tolerance. We have every right, in fact, the obligation, to say that we stand with our concerned Jewish residents and oppose anti-Semitism in truly all of its forms. Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
Michael Gordon, 207 South Fifth Avenue. Josh Brzezinski is handing out something I'm referencing in my talk. There are two heads of the anti-Semitic monster, one overt and one consuming cancer. We all know about the right and the crazies, the Nazis, the white supremacists, Charlottesville, Pittsburgh. But we also don't recognize the terror coming from the left. As Dr. Wiseman said at Simon Wiesenthal's speak a couple of weeks ago, we must call it out hate from our side too, not just point fingers at the right, but point ourselves on the left. Since Highland Park is predominantly left-leaning town, we need to confront hate from the left as much as, and if not more so, from the right. We were shocked when a library planned a children's reading by a BDS supporter whom many of us consider anti-Semitic. We found out this was not to be a one-off and isolated incident. I've mentioned this before, but now Josh has handed out proof. An email dated 5/5/19 from Peter Lemish, a professor from Illinois, to JVP Central Jersey members, with the help from Sam Friedman, a Highland Park resident, lays out their strategies, not just for a book reading, but for a long-term confrontation. I'm going to quote now, "Left is Voices for Justice, proposal to JVP Central New Jersey to lead an organizing, informative, challenging counters from the left. Central issues will be addressed. How do we build initiatives that, one, attract and engage Jewish leftists in Central New Jersey, and oppose Israel-centric narrative education efforts?" That is chilling. When they say Israel-centric, they mean Jewish community, they mean our community. Despite the Peace for Palestine book reading being portrayed as an innocent child's event, it was the initial targeted attack on our community. JVP has decided they should work with other like-minded allies on not promoting peace, but opposing Israel and its Jewish supporters. I get their emails, and there's not been one promoting peace, only anti-Israel and anti-Semitic tropes and fudgraisers. In his email, Mr. Lemish suggested that some local leftists can be allies and help target the Israel-centric Jewish forces of Central New Jersey. I'm going to list three that have been involved in town here, and again, I'm quoting from the email. JSP, Jewish Students for Palestine, an radical anti-Israel college group which demonizes Israel and its Jewish supporters. There's been a largest increase in anti-Semitism on college campuses in New Jersey, mainly from these type of organizations. They hold anti-Semitic events that disguise as anti-Zionist events. They help ferment anti-Semitism in Rutgers. A syllabus was handed out with a website which included anti-Semitic tropes that Israel and Jews calls 9/11. Two Jewish students were beat up for wearing yarmulkes, and a rabbi in town's relative was chased down, raringly yelling, "You're killing babies in Gaza." Is SJP's hatred reaching across the bridge? I hope not. Another organization as an ally is the Highland Park Reform Church. They held a vigil for the killed Hamas terrorists who have sworn to kill Jews, and they've made space available for BDS strategy meetings, both known anti-Semitic movements. The IYAL Parents Community Working Circle...
Time.
Can I speak one more?
Okay, Michael, just, it's not fair to let you...
Okay, my last point is, is there is hate in Hama Park, and we're going to be stronger than hate and stand up for it like we've done for 3,500 years. Thank you very much.
Please state your name and address.
Rob Rosener, Harrison Avenue. I am urging you to vote against adopting Resolution Number 32105 as currently drafted. I support a resolution condemning anti-Semitic behavior and speech. This resolution can do that easily and without division among groups of Highland Parkers if the language about the state of Israel and any criticism of it is removed. With that language removed, it would still be a resolution condemning anti-Semitic behavior and speech, so why add the divisive language? That language is not necessary to the key point of the resolution. Further, how can this borough, or some elements of it, claim authority to dictate what is a legitimate protest movement and by implication dictate what is an unfair protest movement that is solely about the denial of Israel's legitimacy? I am offended by this language because it implicates what might be my solidarity with an oppressed people with another form of anti-Semitism, without recognizing that I could support both viewpoints simultaneously. Calling me anti-Semitic and contrary to the essential values of government because I may feel solidarity with those who fight oppression carried out by foreign states is disheartening and frustrating. and frustrating, and has no place in a municipal resolution from a Central New Jersey borough. Folks, reasonable people can have very different opinions about current issues in our world, but that does not mean we don't support each other's basic humanity. Let's have a resolution that denounces antisemitic behavior and speech, but does not divide fractions of our town, fractions of reasonable people who may simply differ in their opinions about Israel. Let's keep this resolution simple and to the point. I again urge you not to vote for the resolution as currently drafted.
Thank you.
Seth Copperdale, pastor at that Reform Church of Highland Park that has been named a few times. I think, given the way that debates go these days, you know, every time you're named, you're supposed to get extra time, but I won't take it. Mayor Gale, for whom I have tremendous respect, rightly called for a resolution to be passed to address the rise in antisemitism and violence in this country, in this state, the county, and even in our town. And this rise has been especially seen since the last election cycle, and I was enthusiastic to support it. The spirit of her initial ask was consistent with the prayers of myself and my church members and consistent with our responses to prayer. For example, we started a thing called Prayer and Protest right after the last election occurred, and one of the first nights we dedicated to following what had gone on in cemeteries around this country with desecration of cemeteries, and we did a special fundraiser for those cemeteries. That was our response to antisemitism played out in a violent way. We have similarly prayed for those who suffered violence in Pittsburgh and Charlottesville and San Diego. And then we held and participated in public vigils regarding these horrific events. However, the resolution condemning all forms of antisemitism unfairly, I would argue, weds the antisemitism here to opinions about the geopolitics of Israel and Palestine. It has become clear that some would attempt to use this resolution to say how our entire Highland Park community should see and understand the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. And I appreciate the attempt at some language in this version, but it didn't sit well with me, and from the feelings I'm getting here tonight, it definitely isn't enough. We do not all see the Israeli-Palestinian conflict in the same light. Many Jews and non-Jews alike are horrified by the level of Palestinian poverty, hunger, and suffering that is sustained, decade upon decade, by Israel's politics and often with the blessing and backing of the U.S. government. I cannot accept a resolution that lauds Israel and speaks of self-determination and human rights for Israelis while never mentioning Palestinian statehood, self-determination, or human rights. Israel has for many decades occupied a territory by force and kept people from self-determination. It has also, in an ugly way, continued to infringe on the already trapped Palestinians by annexing more and more of an occupied land. The political rhetoric even today as we speak suggests that Netanyahu will stay in power partly due to his promises of further annexation. For years, out of deference for Highland Park's neighbors, and because I didn't see the value of carrying out a fight here, I have been quiet on the matter of Palestine and Israel. I'm loud on lots of things. I've been very quiet on this by comparison with other issues that we take stands on. But it appears now that my silence must end. With the passage of this resolution, it's clearly time for education on Palestine and Israel that tells the story from both sides, and I will encourage and support this kind of honest education. It's time for scholars of the occupation to comment, to share. We're going to have to have people here who can tell the truth as it's seen from a variety of perspectives, and that will include perspectives that not all in this room appreciate. With the passage of this resolution, you are inviting more resolutions too, where the council will be asked to take a stand for the human rights and self-determination of a free Palestine.
Excuse me, time.
Counsel, by passing this resolution, you've opened the door to this, if you pass it. A good and important resolution proposed by a good and honest mayor now leaves a sour taste in my mouth.
I'd appreciate it if people would hold their comments. Please state your name and address.
Susan Gutwill, 224 Valentine Street, Highland Park. Thank you for this opportunity. I want to say that I grew up with a pushka in my dining room. My father is a Holocaust survivor. I am a first-generation Jew. I grew up in USY and as a Zionist, singing all the songs and so on. But I am no longer Zionist. In fact, I just came back from Palestine, where I, with a group of mental health trauma professionals, went to Palestine, and that's where we were in the West Bank, in order to see what's really happening. I cannot tell you how absolutely traumatized I was by what I saw, which I understand Israelis do not see, nor do Americans. And so I would like to tell you a little about that in my time. I found that, you know, there's the huge separation wall, which is much higher on the Palestinian side and covered with barbed wire than it is on the Israeli side. This separates Palestinians from their farms, children from their school. At the Al-Qud University, people can't get from one side to the other. That wall separates also separate roads for the Jewish settlements, which are direct roads and carefully-made roads, which Palestinians with their different license plates are not allowed to drive on. Instead, you can see Jewish settlements growing up all over, especially in Hebron. I never saw anything like it. Outside of what used to be Palestinian homes, those doors have now been welded shut. This is on the main street. And Palestinians who still live there have to climb out their windows, old people, sick people, and then they have to climb down ladders to get to the street, to get their groceries, to get anything else that's available for them in Hebron, which is, in fact, increasingly shrinking. Israelis show Israeli flags out of every window in the face of this absolute horror that I have never seen anything like, and I have been an activist all my life for social justice because of the Holocaust. And, you know, it just was beyond what I could see. At every checkpoint that we saw, Palestinians had to wait three hours. Every person I met in 27 social service agencies had been tortured and jailed themselves, and so had their children. Every one of them was so grateful that I was there, that we were there, all of us, serious psychiatrists, social workers, psychologists, and educators, to be able to listen to them because their story does not get out into this world.
Time.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
Mark Colton, 41 North Eighth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey. I've listened with amazement and shock at much of that has been addressed tonight. For some, hate, Jewish hatred by the right and crazies, can't be accepted in civilized society. However, when articulated by the pseudo-aridite and normally sophisticated left, represents unchallengeable wisdom, the malignant cancer that savages the body politic. Those uppity Jews just won't mind their place. You need to make up your mind, race, religion, people. You can't be a race because you're white and oppressor class. You can't be a religion because religion is for primitives, and humanism is the new religion of the pseudo-intellectuals. Better not a people because you're going to think it's okay to have a Jewish homeland with Jews actually living there. Jews, always a problem. I forget which Jew was it that wrote on the Jewish question, Karl Marx or Bernie Sanders? The other Jew that comes to mind on that very subject was Moses of Ten Commandments fame. He was pretty clear and had no question of who they are. It's those of biblical fame, the children of Israel. Israel-Palestinian issues, not a Highland Park issue, so it's not part of the resolution. So the resolution doesn't address the antisemitic textbooks and calls for destruction of Israel in both the PA-Fatan-Hamas charters, pay to slay Gaza and West Bank terrorism preventing joint economic activity and causing a wall to be built? Not even that Jordan is East Palestine, ruled by a foreign minority imported by the British? Or for that matter, the Palestinians are the third-largest voting bloc in the Israeli parliament, or Palestinian chairs, one of the largest banks in Israel? No, that should not be in the resolution. I agree. Nor is it part of Highland Park municipal issues. But antisemitism is. What we should talk about are internationally-accepted definitions, accepted by both the Obama and Trump administrations, by nations around the world and the United Nations. And so the resolution is consistent with those internationally-accepted definitions and characterizations. It clearly delineates between antisemitic-led movements that uniquely target Israel and its Jewish population, and individuals who have a right to think, speak, and act in a civilized manner. We're a town where hate has no home. There are good people on both sides of the aisle, but there are others here with agendas, hostile and hateful agendas, targeting those uppity Jews that seeks to call out the haters, targeting uppity Jews that won't abide by the targeting of Jews anywhere in the world, be it Rutgers, Highland Park, Europe, or Israel. Clearly, those uppity Jews are not from our Democratic Party, really, maybe not from the Socialist Party. They come with silver tongues laced with syrup. Others are ready to strike down the Jews that won't reform to their cause. There's a biblical story allegory, some say, about a couple named Adam and Eve, taught to stay on the straight and true. In their heart, they knew what was true and how they should act. One day, a snake appeared, silvery tongue wrapped around a sweet maple tree. Behold the tree of knowledge. Here you will find the truth, and the truth will set you free. Never mind that little voice that tells you to stray. But we know the results of Cain and Abel and challenges.
Mark, it's time.
One sentence. The IHRA UN Special Rapporteur part of the straight and true. You know that in your heart, that soothsayer wrapped around that tree is not providing sweetness, but hurting pain. Thank you for your vote.
Andrew Getreher, 801 South Second Avenue. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Borough Council, for putting this resolution into the agenda. I know you have spent months debating this issue, researching this issue, speaking to dozens of people on all sides, and I commend you for bringing this finally to a place where we can have a resolution that I believe will be acceptable to all but the most extreme people in our community. And I want to address not the Israeli-Palestinian conflict, because that's not what Highland Park is about, that's not what this resolution is about, and we shouldn't be debating it. I was listening to some of the people who were opposing this resolution, trying to take notes on all the falsehoods and misstatements of fact, and there are too many. I don't have enough time to go over them. So I just want to talk about antisemitism and how it affects the people of Highland Park, the Jews of Highland Park. The only reason that the International Holocaust Remembrance Association definition is in this resolution is because it is the most widely-accepted definition of antisemitism in the world. It is accepted by nations and municipalities throughout Europe, and in Latin America, and states across America, and in some two dozen towns right here in New Jersey. And that definition includes the fact that boycotts and sanctions against targeting Israel are antisemitic, because in fact, that is how Jews experience those boycotts and sanctions. BDS does not hurt Israel. The Israeli economy has boomed for 25 years with no one in sight. They have got more diplomatic relations with more countries than ever before. Israel is not affected. Who is affected? Us, Jews who live in the diaspora. Because when you demonize and delegitimize Israel, it's a half a step to demonizing and delegitimizing people who support Israel. And over 90% of American Jews support the right of Israel to exist. So when you vote for this resolution, as I urge you to do, keep in mind that, as Jews, we can help you understand how we feel antisemitism affects us. If black people tell you something is racist, believe it. If gay people tell you something is homophobic, believe it. If Jews tell you something is antisemitic, I hope you will believe it too, and I urge you to vote for the resolution. Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Herb Gross, and I live at Adelaide Gardens. I have listened to all the women and all the gentlemen come up here and voice their opinion, and right now, I'm going to voice my opinion. I have asked the members of the council, I have asked the counselor, and I have asked the mayor, to please set aside a day. If everyone in attendance here watching television want to talk about antisemitism, this is not the place. We must have a special day that everyone can talk about antisemitism. Right now, we have issues here in Highland Park that have to be addressed, and they are not being addressed. All the issues in Highland Park are finding their way to the curb. This has got to stop. Everyone that comes to these meetings, we must, you, your family, talk about issues in Highland Park. As a veteran, I have fought and served for that one word, freedom. And everyone in attendance here, they seem to be forgetting what the word freedom means. Freedom is not free. You have to fight for it. You just can't come up here to the microphone and talk about antisemitism. We have issues here in Highland Park that have to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Yes, hi.
And you can move that up if you need to.
Yeah, that would help. Don Stern, 317 Summit Place, Highland Park. As witness everything that's been talked about, we see how divisive this resolution is. I've lived in the town over 30 years. This is one of the most divisive things I have ever seen. It doesn't need to be this way. This is a very simple thing. There's massive support in this town for a resolution against antisemitism, but the insistence on having Israel injected into this creates the division. It doesn't have to be this way. Every iteration of this resolution changes it not at all. A word is tweaked, another word is tweaked, but the problem remains, and the problem is that there is a lot of division over Israel. There is not a lot of division over antisemitism. Let's have a resolution about antisemitism. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Fardaro. I live on Wayne Street. I'm not an antisemite. In fact, I lost my grandmother yesterday. She was 97, and in 97 years, I don't think she ever let anything go by that she thought was wrong without commenting on it. And so I feel as if my comment tonight may be the most Jewish thing about me. When the mayor asked this council in October to come up with a new resolution that focused on antisemitism in Highland Park instead of Israel, I was hopeful. I thought the council might actually listen. I thought the council might even acknowledge that the Jewish men who feel unsafe walking down the street in Ekipah have something important in common with the Muslim women who feel unsafe walking down Main Street in hijab, or the black residents of Highland Park who have been targeted by their neighbors and our own police department for walking in their own neighborhoods, or driving on Main Street, or the Spanish speakers being told to speak English in our farmer's market, or the LGBTQ residents being harassed on the street in our town. Instead of rightly condemning bigots on our streets, in our schools, and online who accuse Jewish Americans of having a dual loyalty to Israel, this resolution does the opposite by calling questioning Israel's status as a Jewish state an attack on all Jews. It labels all anti-Zionism as antisemitism, which is not consistent with any mainstream definition of those terms, and I'll even include the IHRA definition in that. It says nothing about anti-Zionism being antisemitism. Instead of condemning double standards that promote bias against our Jewish residents, this resolution promotes a double standard that condemns any effort to deny self-determination to Israeli Jews, but excuses those who would deny the same right of self-determination to Palestinians. In these troubled times, I want all of our residents, including our Jewish residents, to be safe. And I want everyone not just to be safe, but to feel safe, but those are two different things. Fostering solidarity, building common ground, and increasing understanding can help make our community safer. This resolution does none of those things. Instead, it tries to make some residents feel safer by condemning and defaming other residents whose beliefs make them uncomfortable. This council should have the courage to say no to this resolution. Not, "We don't want to spend any more time on this." Not, "We're going to say this, but don't worry about it. It won't actually be used against any of you." Just no. Whether it's posted on the front door of our Borough Hall, or rammed through on the consent agenda with the towing contract and tax abatement, it is not right to falsely label innocent residents as antisemites because they are anti-Zionist, or anti-Al-Qud, or anti-Netanyahu, or pro-Palestinian, or pro-human rights, and it's not right to blame them for the violent and despicable acts of true bigots. Please vote no.
Jeff—
My name is Ellen Witt.
I live on South First Avenue. I believe that just as we should stand up against racist, sexist, anti-LGBT, and Islamophobic attacks, we must make it clear that attacks on and the scapegoating of Jews is not acceptable anywhere. Characterizing all Jews in the world, or even all Israeli citizens, as responsible for all that the State of Israel does is not right, in my opinion. However, the Israeli government is responsible for its actions, which affect the more than 6 million Arabs and Palestinians who live under its control, especially those who live in the occupied West Bank and Gaza. Your resolution condemns campaigns of, quote, "economic warfare," unquote, against Israel. However, you completely deny the very real economic warfare carried out by the Israeli government against the Palestinian people. While you reject collective economic punishment of Israeli people, you ignore the more than a decade of collective economic punishment of the Palestinian people that comes in the form of a well-documented economic blockade of Gaza, a naval blockade of Gaza, which prevents Palestinian fishermen from reaching good fishing areas, the refusal—the, I'm sorry—the destruction of Palestinian farmers' olive groves, the demolition of Palestinian homes, the refusal to grant most Palestinians construction permits to build housing, and the massive system of military checkpoints which have strangled Palestinian trade and movement. If you'd actually like to learn more about this, perhaps you could read the 2019 Human Rights Watch report on Israel. Your statement that, quote, "In the resolution, while imperfect, Israel provides freedom of religion, culture, and economic aspirations even during periods of intense terrorist activities," unquote, denies the very real ongoing economic warfare against the Palestinians. I realize that many of those who pushed for this resolution from the community deny the Palestinians even exist, which is probably why the word is not even mentioned in your resolution. Many of them also oppose a two-state solution, which is why you can't say anything about Palestinian self-determination. Based on this resolution, it looks like your education programs will be simply promoting the legitimacy of Israel without addressing the concerns about Palestinian human rights, which is what gave rise to the efforts for boycott campaigns in the first place, that you in turn condemn as antisemitic. Without giving context to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict in your resolution and an honest account of the situation, you will reduce your efforts to a propaganda campaign.
Time.
So I urge you to reconsider this approach.
Okay. Excuse me, ma'am. I'm going—I'm—
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to extend the time for 15 minutes to allow the remaining speakers online to speak.
Everybody okay with that? Okay. Nobody else, please?
Henry Shanser, 29 Brookfall Road.
And there is—there will be an opportunity later on.
So how many speakers?
It is—
Five.
Can I start?
And please—if you've already spoken, please sit down.
It is hard to believe that in our supposedly tolerant and liberal community, the proposed resolution—
Oh, excuse me. I need your name and address. Henry, your name and address. You have to start—
Henry Shanser, 29 Brookfall Road, Edison, New Jersey. I'll start again. It is hard to believe that in our supposedly tolerant and liberal community, the proposed resolution on antisemitism is being attacked. Antisemitism has been around for ages. The Jewish people still has not recovered from the murder of 6 million of the 9 million European Jews at the hands of the Nazis and their collaborators. In recognition for the communal guilt in allowing the genocide to occur, the world powers recognized the need to establish the State of Israel as a home for the survivors of the Holocaust and for Jews fleeing virulent antisemitism. As you all know, immediately upon its creation, the State of Israel was attacked by all the Arab nations around it. Fortunately, it has survived. Recently, classic antisemitism has mutated into a well-organized anti-Israel agenda for reasons that escape me. Many supposedly liberal individuals and so-called progressives do not recognize that demonizing and delegitimizing Israel is a form of antisemitism. The resolution you members of the council are being asked to pass is not going to solve the ignoble hatred of Jews, but it will show that each one of you knows right from wrong and is worthy of the position you hold. It is time for you to display leadership and to show that there is no place for this type of hatred in our town. Based on what I'm hearing today, there are individuals, some claiming to be Jewish, who are so blinded by false propaganda and the lack of appreciation for the positive aspects of Judaism and Israel that they do not know the difference between right and wrong. These misguided individuals subscribe to the obvious lie that Israel, the only democracy in the Middle East, is an apartheid state, and that it is appropriate to boycott Israel and its products, divest from any Israel business, and sanction any communication with Israel and Israeli institutions. Just yesterday, there were elections in Israel—
Henry, it's time. Thank you.
My name is Elliot Malamet. I'm the rabbi of the Highland Park Conservative Temple, Congregation Ansheammet. It's my first time at one of these meetings. My time here is also overdue, and like my colleague, Pastor Seth, I also am not going to remain silent, especially when I hear so many lies being recited tonight, including one lie about AIPAC. I was at AIPAC. I just returned from AIPAC, the policy conference this year, where I heard none other than Cory Booker speak, I heard none other than Joe Biden speak, I heard Mike Bloomberg speak, I heard dozens of people speak from all sorts of diverse backgrounds heralding the bipartisan relationship, and of course, trying to protect that bipartisan relationship between the United States and Israel was under attack. But you know, the most important person that I heard speak was a woman named Shana Applebaum Abrams. Shana Applebaum Abrams is the sister of Nava Applebaum. She's the daughter of David Applebaum, who are both having an evening dinner the night before their wedding, when a suicide bomber came up to the Cafe Hillel and detonated himself, killing them both, father and daughter, the night before their/her wedding. And so when I think of the reason for a wall between the Palestinian territories and Israel, it's only about protecting the lives of Israel. It's only about making sure that no terror happens. And when we watch rockets rain down from Gaza, and we watch rockets rain in from Lebanon, we ourselves feel very, very threatened by that. And we see that there are voices so-called for peace in our community that regretfully meet in one of the churches in our community that aid and abet this kind of thing. Friends, there is not a dotted line between those who propose anti-Zionism. There is a straight line between anti-Zionism and the will to dismantle the State of Israel by any means possible. I had come here with another set of remarks to say, but it is very evident that antisemitism is cloaked in lies. All antisemitism is cloaked in lies. Antisemitism is cloaked in lies too. Anti-Zionism, just like antisemitism, is a conspiratorial ideology pinning society's ills on the world's Jew, that is, the State of Israel. Antisemitism is complicated to understand because it is so adaptable, so old, and so tied in to patterns of cognitive failure. Antisemitism is painful, and it is also, as we have seen, sometimes lethal. The delegitimization, the demonization of Israel arouses profound traumas in large numbers of the community. I urge you to vote for this resolution, to ease this trauma, to state that this is a community that condemns antisemitism in all of its forms, including regretfully anti-Zionism.
Please, please state your name and address.
My name is Max Wazowski. I live at 54 North Seventh Avenue in Highland Park. There has been an alarming increase in antisemitism worldwide and in the United States. As you have heard, antisemitism these days is not the same as classical antisemitism, and takes different forms now. It is called anti-Israel, anti-Zionism, anti-colonialism, BDS, and other actions. But when one people, one state, one religion, one movement among all those in the rest of the world is singalot for attack, that is discrimination, pure and simple. It is not free speech, freedom of expression, or free market forces. These are forms of hate and are only covers for antisemitism. Many governments at home and abroad have recognized this and expressed support for their threatened Jewish citizens by passing various forms of legislation condemning antisemitism. In the past year alone, Austria, Germany—which knows a thing or two about antisemitism—France, the United States, and 28 of its states, including New Jersey, as well as other municipalities, have all passed various forms of antisemitism resolutions. And Highland Park, which has a greater percentage of Jews than any of the other governments that I mentioned, and has been specifically targeted because of it, is now wrestling with this problem. Meanwhile, the tidal wave of antisemitism is washing ever closer to us. Poay, California, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, Muncie, New York, Jersey City, New Jersey, and now it is lapping at our own feet. We have already seen antisemitic incidents in the streets and schools of our town, and our municipal library put on a program for toddlers presented by an avowed BDS supporter. These are the facts, all a matter of public record. So contrary to the signs on many lawns in our town, hate is indeed threatening to rear its ugly head in Highland Park, and with it, the possibility of violence. I have been a proud resident of Highland Park for over 50 years, but never in my worst nightmares did I ever envision having to go to synagogue here, being protected by armed guards, having locked doors, security cameras, designated safe rooms, and defensive security protocols. And we can't point the blame elsewhere. Our problem is here in Highland Park, and it gives this council the chance to join the global effort to try to reverse the downward spiral into hate. In closing, I applaud the earnest efforts of this council to try to understand and come to grips with this issue, and I hope that you now do the right thing for all of citizens and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Rafi Kornfeld. I live on South Third Avenue, 427, and I'm 16 years old. And what I've been seeing around the past couple months is appalling. I have seen a rise in antisemitism, which is also a rise in anti-Zionism. My family, my grandfather, my Saba, was a Holocaust survivor. He fought in the 56 War in the Sinai Peninsula. He never, ever said that he believed in killing Palestinians. He says that they're a people, and they were forced to by their government. And my grandmother, she was a Holocaust survivor. She hid in Belgium during the war. My grandfather, his tradition is that from 1492, we were kicked out of Spain. For what? For being Jewish. We were kicked out before that from the Byzantine Empire for being Jewish. We were kicked out of Judea for being Jewish. And why? Because we didn't accept replacement theology. And I'd like to share something else. The prophet of blessed memory, Zachariah, 3,600 years ago, he passed away. He said, "Hina yom bal haShem, v'chulach shel ech bekerbeich." The day of God is coming, and your spoils will be divided in your midst. To a Jew of ancient times, what would that mean? There was one empire. What does it mean? "The Safdieh, Skoleg, Yimel, Yishalim, Ilkamah." Will gather all the nations of the world to Jerusalem to do battle? "The Yasser al-Mloye, Karas Meir." Half the city will be sent into exile, and half will remain. Because he was talking about a time like today, where the Jews themselves will come, and they'll come together against Jerusalem, and they will cut it in half, and God will come and fight for us, kiyom krav, like the day of the splitting of the sea. And I see all these Jews here today that come here to slander Israel. We have a blessing that we say three times a day in our prayer called Shmoda Azrei, called "V'lam Ashinim Al Tehi Tikvah." For the slanderers, let there be no hope. And it's talking about the Jews who come here, and they slander Israel at all costs to cause immense amounts of suffering towards the Jewish community. That blessing was written in the year 90, because it wasn't a new problem. Part of the reason why the second temple was destroyed was because there were slanderers amongst the Jews that went to the Roman Empire to have the temple destroyed. And that's why we say that blessing, "V'lam Ashinim Al Tehi Tikvah." Let the slanderers have no hope. And I want to say something. You could pass the resolution. I strongly encourage that you do. But at the end of the day, it doesn't matter, because at the end of the day, the nations of the world will come against us, and there's nothing that we can do about it, and God will fight for us, like the day of the splitting of the sea. Thank you.
And you are the last speaker.
First of all, thank you. My name is Audrey Mandro. Could you hear me? You spoke. In here? Good? Good? I'm sorry. Somebody's telling me he was already standing up. But did you speak already? Okay, then, go ahead. All right. My name is Audrey Mandro. I live at 25 Marshall Drive, Edison, New Jersey. Good? Now good? Okay. And, thank you. And, you know, I heard that everyone here said, and I too also just came from AIPAC, so we were just a little late, because we just came in from it. And I guess I would like to pose some questions to you, and I know you can't answer it, but I just have a couple of questions. And I really thank you for this, because I know this isn't easy for you. Okay. First of all, I think that all people should be protected in this community, and it's really unfortunate that anyone should have to not—to anyone should have to be protected. We should move freely. My question is BDS. Now, I know what it is, but what are we boycotting here? Is it antisemitism? And I know you can't answer. It's hypothetical. Products from Israel? Now, if you are boycotting products from Israel, they're working on this coronavirus. Does that mean that everybody here who's against Israel, if you should come down with it, you're not getting that medicine? Or is it selective boycotting that we're boycotting here? Just a statement that we don't like what Israel's doing? Two separate issues. Think about this. The other two separate issues are, we want to boycott Israel because some people feel that they—and I'm not debating it—that there's Palestinian—the way we treat Palestinians in Israel. My question is, what are we doing here about the hundreds of rockets being rained down on innocent families? That girl, Nava, I just saw—I also saw that clip today, and I knew about it, because my friend was going to the supermarket in Ephraat and was stabbed to death. So what are we doing about the balloons coming down and the rockets on innocent people and the trauma there? Those are my questions, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Ed, you're the last person.
Ed Prince, 703 South Fifth Ave. So I really didn't want to stand up here and speak, and I know, so it forced me. Well, two things. And the reason I want to speak was because I'm probably going to annoy virtually everybody. But I want to make a couple of points, I think, really that haven't been made. But I want to make a couple of points, I think, really are, that haven't been made. The first is, I got to tell you, honestly, BDS, eh! Their influence is so insignificant. Their ability to affect policy is so minor. Someday, maybe. Not now. Not for the foreseeable future. They are Billy Joel's version of "The Angry Young Man." They get angry as their matters of principle. They're going to stand and do the right thing, no matter what. Okay. Will they affect policy? No. Will they make it safer? But there's a piece here that I think is really important to understand. And that is, H. Omenkin actually put it really well. He said, "To every complicated and complex problem, there is a simple and neat solution." And it's wrong. Because if it were easy, we would do it. The problem that you have here, and I've been trying to analyze this as a person who isn't Jewish, who hasn't gone through the education, who's saying, wait, what is this connection here? Let's make a clean division. There's Israel, and there's antisemitism. But here's the problem. You're asking Jews to define themselves in a way which is alien to them. It's often been said that Judaism, when I was young, was a hydrox cookie because hydrox was kosher, and Orioles weren't. Orioles are now, so I could say it's an Oriole cookie. You've got two chocolate, wait first, and a vanilla center. Now you can, if you wish, twist them apart, make out the center, and you get something else. It's not an Oriole anymore. Judaism has historically had multiple parts. It's had a religion. It's had a culture. And yes, it's had a nationality. And if you object to the inclusion of the nationality part, you are defining Judaism forth. And I would be hesitant to ask any of you to give me the right to define you in a way in which you wish not to be defined. The reason why these things are inseparable to the Jewish community is because this support for Israel in general, not the individual politician or the individual policy, but the support for Israel is built in to our DNA as how we define ourselves as Jews. So if you're having difficulty understanding why you can't separate it, please understand this is where it's coming from. And I think.
We've completed the first public discussion session. I'm moving on now. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, can you please report on advertising 433 Cleveland Avenue redevelopment plan for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Mayor, I'd like to propose a motion that this is a continuance for this resolution until March 17.
Okay.
The planning board is still analyzing this and needs a little bit more time.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do I roll call, or all in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
I'm getting two different answers here. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes, to table.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes, to continue.
Clerk, can you please report on advertising an ordinance to amend the zoning map for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 230-124 of the Code of the Borough of Highland Park to adopt an updated zoning map for the borough is duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
I just want to thank our borough planner, Chris Cosenza, for redoing our zoning map and finally making it readable for everyone. So yes, thank you.
That's true.
Okay. I believe we discussed earlier removing Resolution 32103 and separating it out from the consent agenda, correct?
Oh, three or oh five?
32105.
Oh, five.
Madam Mayor, I thought that we had a point to increase the discussion, but not to separate it from the consent agenda.
Okay. So are we keeping it in this? Everybody feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
I'm talking about to the council.
No.
Ms. Mayor?
He has to be heard, I have to be heard.
No, nobody's...
We've heard this already.
Excuse me.
Okay, okay. I have asked everyone to please be calm and let us continue with the meeting.
The borough attorney told me, unless you're going to pull it out, the borough attorney told me that there were two times that we could request that the item be taken out of the consent agenda. One was when I did in the public comment, and the other was right before the consent agenda. So that's what I'm doing, asking that it be taken out.
So, okay. However, I think I heard a council member. Did you?
I have nothing to say anymore.
Okay. Okay. Then, because this is something that is totally new for us, I have to rely on the borough attorney to tell me there is a resident that raised his hand asking that this be taken out of the consent agenda. And so the council is now obligated to agree or not agree, or tell me... This is never, in my entire, since 2009, I have never experienced this.
Well, the language on our agenda, which references ordinance number 920, which we don't have here, it's probably an older ordinance, and we'll look at it now, but we don't have it today, simply indicates that if there is an item on the consent agenda and a member of council or the public requests that that be handled by a separate vote, then that item should be handled by a separate vote. Now normally, as council president indicated to me earlier today, that this is, would be a situation where a council person may have a conflict on voting on something, and they would ask that the matter be deleted, and then there would be a separate vote. I think in the context of this evening, it probably would be fair to read what I just read, and that is the public, where a council person can request that this matter come out of the consent agenda and trigger a separate vote. So my recommendation would be to vote on every item on the consent agenda except number 18, and then immediately vote on 18.
Okay. Well, if we're going to do that, then I know Councilwoman Kim Cho Han had a conflict with 103, which is...
Good. So then she could abstain from that vote. She could abstain on voting on the remainder of the consent agenda with an abstention because of number 103. She would abstain on that. You still have enough votes to adopt the consent agenda. But you still have number 18, which I would suggest you immediately vote upon after the rest of the consent agenda with the council person's abstention on her item.
Okay. So then I am going to ask for a motion to adopt consent agenda items 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 19, 20, and 21. And I'm hearing chatter, and I, you know...
Councilwoman...
She could abstain on the vote.
Stephanie, you had a conflict with 103.
Number 16.
Right. But the borough attorney said she can just abstain.
Right. You would abstain on this vote.
On 16.
Right. On the vote on the consent agenda.
No, but I want to vote for the others. I'm going to vote for that cold, blue warming grant. Like, I want to vote for that.
And you would simply abstain on number 16.
16, got it.
Right. So that's what I heard the borough attorney say. So everybody finished having their little sidebars up here? Can we proceed? Okay. I am calling for a vote on consent agenda items 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 19, 20, and 21, and I am moving number 18 for a separate vote.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, abstaining on 3-20-103.
Correct.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Now, may I have a motion to adopt or reject item number 18, resolution condemning all forms of antisemitism?
So moved.
Do I have a sec?
So moved.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Before I make any decisions, I have to say that I've seen for the, it feels like a year now that we have been going over and over and over this conversation with the community divided. Some people say the community is not divided. Some people say, yes, the community is divided. When I last spoke on this, and from where I sit, I see division. And I, there's always a referent that there's, the signs that we, a lot of us have on our property says, "There is no hate," to stamp out hate in Highland Park. I have one of those signs. And over the past couple of months, it made me feel like I should remove the sign from my property. And I'm really thinking that I really should remove the sign from my property. Because as the only black person, and I don't see anybody else in here that's black, that sits here, I know that it's not every place that I go in Highland Park that I feel safe. That's never considered. I hear the concerns on both sides. But there's always one person in the room that looks like me that is never considered. A number of years ago, we had a survey down in Highland Park. We did it for, the process was done, there was break-ins that was coming from certain parts of the community. And they said, "Let's find out what's going on with these break-ins." So I spoke with the chief at the time, and we did a study, and we had officers that go out in that particular community and to see what was going on. When we had young white officers go to those, to that particular community, they were offered, "Do you want a bottle of water?" If they were sitting on the front step, the person didn't say, "What are you doing here?" They were treated kindly. They were treated humanely. They were treated with dignity. And this happened for three weeks in Highland Park. Different officers. Some were wearing, they were not, they were wearing grunge clothes. They were wearing whatever they wanted to wear, and they were treated hospitably. We had a black officer that went there, and in one hour, we received 20 phone calls. And my hope was, when I saw the sign a number of years ago that says, "Hate has no place here," that would be a wake-up call for all of us, me included, all of us, that we would say within our hearts, "Let's live harmoniously together." That hasn't happened. I have been to houses of worship here in Highland Park where I did not feel welcome, where I was not welcome. And I still kept that sign, "Hate has no place here." And I can still keep that place in my heart that one day, we're going to see a better, a much more inclusive, much more tolerant Highland Park. And I've sat here for months and months. I've met with many of you. I received all the emails for and against. I even received racially laced emails. That was not good. And again, I hear, "Hate has no home here." But I received emails from some of you in this audience tonight that was just downright racist and biased and bigoted. And then you look at me, sitting here on this dais, and you say, "We need your support one way or the other." And then the emails come in and say, "Vote this way." Or, "If you don't vote this way, you know, there's an election coming up, and we're going to do something about it." And for those of you who have said that to me, you need to do something about it. That's your choice. I do not like this division that I see in town. When I came here, I worked hard to get the communities together. There's Carcy Park up the street from here. And it was said that the people that were using Carcy Park was destroying the park. They didn't belong here. They didn't want them here. One of the first campaigns I did was to reach out to the young people that attended the yeshivas and didn't go to school in town, and to bring them together and to say, "Okay, let's work on stamping out graffiti." And we went through towns, through the town, and wherever we saw graffiti was a whole campaign. We beautified the park. We made it a welcoming place. And we worked together. Both communities, all the communities came together to work together to make this happen. And I was really proud. And I felt I was a part of a town that cared about me, people of color, and everyone was included in this little melting pot we call Highland Park. And I really felt that. And then this all happened. And while I stand that, "I hate has no place here," and I really believe it, that we should not have any place for hatred in our heart, and antisemitism, that everyone should be allowed to walk down these streets of Highland Park and not fear, and antisemitism should not have a home here. I believe that 100%. I would have, I can vote standing up on my head for that. But I hear the voices of people all over. You know, this is the same Highland Park when I came here 25 years ago that had a Confederate flag and Department of Public Works. Same Highland Park. This is also the same Highland Park where we got into a heated conversation, I'm going to say, with public safety. I got in, the only woman in the room, the only person of color in the room. And they told me, if my house was on fire, they was going to let it burn. This is my lovely Highland Park. But I learned to move beyond that. With all of that said, we need to do self-inspection on each and every one of us. I get it every day. As I said over and over again in all these discussions, everyone else in this room can walk out there and safely walk and blend into society. You have white privilege. I don't, never will. However, I strive to see a better day, when we all can be inclusive, when we all can speak civilly to each other and not just shut your door, ignore, or walk away, but truly be inclusive, truly be the dreams of both sides. Because both of you want the same thing. At the end of the day, we all want to live harmoniously. We want to live in peace. We want humanity to be respected and to be honored. And that's all, that's all of us. That's what we want. And it's very hard for me to come down on one side or the other. But the work must go on. And I'm imploring each and every one of you to be intentional in the things that you do, to be intentional in being inclusive, be intentional to respecting each other, be intentional to others' opinion. And with that, I am going to go vote yes for this, because we must move on.
Councilman George?
You all heard my comments the last time when I voted no, because the division had gotten so bad that even council couldn't agree to adopt... gotten so bad that even council couldn't agree to adopt the resolution that they had reached consensus on on October 3rd. I was the one that challenged them to sit down until all hours of the night and come up with a compromise. And we did. We tried to reach a compromise, and we know we weren't making everyone happy, in fact, we probably weren't making anyone happy. But the council's job in enacting a resolution is to enact a resolution that reflects the community. I look at council, we have a representation of ethnicity, of religion, and of color, just like our community does. And I'm glad that we reflect our community to that extent, as well as with its thoughts, its beliefs, its dreams, and its aspirations. As a result of that inability to reach the compromise, however, we engaged in another And quite frankly, the discussions I had with several of my council members in reaching some type of a new compromise, or at least moving toward recognizing that anti-Semitism is a problem, that it's a significant problem, that it affects our residents, and as you've heard me say over and over again, it affects all of our community. Because we are composed, just like this council, of different ethnicities, of different colors, and of different races, but we are all part of the same overall community. And when part of it is disenfranchised, when part of it is unsafe, when part of it has a particular position, then we all share our positions, we all share in that fear because it is part and parcel of this town. And we had some discussions with some of the people on the other side, and I had a very frank conversation with Reverend Seth yesterday. We shared our positions forcefully at times, and I was reminded that most of the major changes that started in this country, beginning in the early 50s, started in churches. I wasn't around for the racial meetings, but my father was, in the Little Baptist Church in Plainfield. I remember the churches beginning with the anti-war movement. Whether we respect our veterans or not, that was a serious time that started in the churches. And ultimately, for the discussions with members of council, we came up with a compromise. And I know that the issue still exists. I know that the audience, individually and one-on-one, respect each other, but the public sentiment and the public statement that becomes part of the public record is divided. And it is divided, and we have called each other names. I don't like that. I think that you need to reflect. I think that you need to go back to respect. Or I think that you're going to end up like the national debate, which is an embarrassment to me, was brought up on the Constitution, and it is what I do every day. I would not have adopted this resolution. I can tell you very honestly. The resolution that I would have adopted was written by a very noted and famous anti-Semite. Hath a Jew not eyes? Hath a Jew not hands, organs, dimensions, senses, affections, passions, fed with the same food, hurt with the same weapons, subject to the same diseases, healed by the same means, warmed and cooled by the same winter and summer? That's what I would have adopted, because that's what I would like the town to do. My son graduates high school, he goes off to the Institute of Technology, and I hope when he enters this greater world where this debate is going on, he takes that message, not this debate. I vote yes.
This has been a long process, and it's been one of, a lot of work. And I wanted to thank all of the, my fellow council members for the hard work that they have put in on this issue. I wanted to thank the community for all of the hard work that they have put on the issue. Both sides have worked hard to get their positions, their ideas, and their thoughts out, and there's been a tremendous amount of work. We've heard a tremendous amount of words at this meeting from the dais at previous meetings. It also comes time for action, and this is the action. I vote yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
I just want to say on the, on the resolution, we didn't really touch much on the educational piece that has been added into the resolution. I current, now, this year, I'm chairing Human Relations Commission, that they, that's the follow-up with this resolution. Last, when I initially joined council, this room was packed on the immigration and refugee resolution. And after that, the resolution was filed in the clerk's office and empty chairs. So I'm hoping you guys will join HRC at their next meeting, March 18th, 7:00 PM, to make sure both sides are heard through the process and the educational piece that we have added into this resolution. I'm not going to go on and on, because I don't want to be misquoted again in Jewish link, but, no pun intended, but I vote yes. And it's time, it's time for us to come together and work on educational pieces for all, and the same energy, whether it's an East Asian resident in our community that's, that's experiencing hate, African-American in this community, or LGBTQ, Muslim, our, our neighbor. We have to stand up for them. And that's my vote.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Thank you, Clerk. A lot's been said, so I'm going to keep it brief, and besides, my vertigo is, I would want to be anywhere else but here right now, especially my bed at home, but I know this is really important. We've done many drafts of this resolution in an effort to really, really address anti-Semitism. There were some other, there were some other agenda items on here in the past, but I don't think this one really addressed, really refers to that much. There's no reference to BDS. There's no reference to Palestine, because we're not talking about Palestine, we're talking about anti-Semitism. The problem that you get here is that, for a safe state of Israel to exist, for people that are persecuted, for Jews that are persecuted to feel that they can live safely in a state of Israel which they lead, is an incredibly important thing. I, I, I am not a fan of the current Israeli administration, I may not be a fan of future administrations or future policies, I reserve the right to comment on such things, and I believe that other people should have the same right. However, if the state of, the existence of a state of Israel is delegitimized or demonized, it has a huge impact to those Jews that feel it is a necessary safe haven. That, I believe, is the important part here, that people think we're not separating out enough. And I don't know how we can separate that out any better. I'm going to just be really brief, and I'm, let's just put an end to this. I also unanimously vote in favor of this. Thank you. Okay. We're going to go into the final public comment session, three minutes per speaker again. I'm going to ask the borough adminis-
It's nine o'clock.
Oh, this, it is nine o'clock? Okay, I have, I-
Let's invite you to the room for a sound.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a motion to extend beyond nine o'clock to nine fifteen.
Move the mic over here for a second.
Is there a second?
Yes, Ms. Welkowitz.
Okay. All in favor for nine fifteen?
Let's go, let's go.
Yes. Okay.
Sorry. Shh. I'm Boris, 1158 Raritan.
Hold, hold, if you're leaving, can you please leave quietly so that the people who are remaining can speak? Is there someone at the microphone?
Yeah.
We're extending it fifteen minutes, so it's five people max. So please, if you're lining up to speak, know that there will be only five people. And you can thank, thank the council for extending this.
Should I start?
Well, just, we can't hear you. Just give him, otherwise, we won't hear you. We won't hear you, see?
Thank you.
I can go out.
You, you?
Now we need to heal. We need to heal. We need healing. We need healing. On both sides, we all said not a meaningful, something used to feel.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Boris, 1158 Raritan. First of all, thank you to the whole council for, for voting yes. This was an important vote and for resolution.
Boris, Boris, we just need your last name for the-
Bronstein, sorry. Boris Bronstein.
Can you spell that?
B-R-O-N-S-H-T-E-Y-N.
Okay, thank you.
Cool. Thank you, it was an important vote, an important distinction to make, and specifically tying anti-Semitism to Israel, it is impossible to not unify them together, specifically because antisemites do not make that distinction. Some people here ask, why mention Israel? Why politicize this? And the truth is, they were the only ones politicizing this by talking about Palestinian causes and this and that, and that's an important issue to discuss in a different place. However, when people, for instance, the person that stabbed, you know, went to Muncie and stabbed a few rabbis in Ashol, one of the things that he looked up was Zionist synagogues. When a terrorist in France went to a Jewish day school and murdered children in cold blood, he said he did it for Palestine. Now, that doesn't equate all Palestinians to be murderers, but there are very many terrorists among them. There are many people that murder for the Palestinian causes, Black September is among them. Tying antisemites tie Israel to Jews. In Europe, in France, in London, people can't wear kippas in the street because they get attacked. And they don't get to say, oh, it's the Jews, they tie it with anti-Zionism as well. It's something that are inextricably connected. And it's just unfortunate and telling that people get so worked up about the mere mention of the legitimacy of the existence of Israel. Such a thing does not exist for other places. When Turkey commits actual genocide against the Kurds, occupies half of Greece, you don't hear these people boycotting or saying anything. No one talks about destroying entire countries and dissolving countries for some issue that they see with them, except in the case of Israel. And that is why this resolution was important to do. And it's not the case of economic, you know, legalizing economic boycotts. It's legalizing economic boycotts that are based on racism, or anti-Semitism, or any kind of ethnic discrimination. And that is what BDS is by default, because their only way that they take away the economic sanctions and delegitimization is with the destruction of Israel and the murder or displacement of millions of Jews. I don't see what, what can be more anti-Semitic than that. Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
It's been so long, I forgot it already. Josh Przansky, North 10th Avenue here in Highland Park. First of all, I want to thank the council. It's been a long eleven months. This all started in April of last year, when someone invited a person who is known to be an anti-Semite, who's known to be anti-Israel, pro-BDS, to speak to our children in a taxpayer-funded library. That precipitated everything here. There was no thought by anyone in our community to come to the Borough Council to pass an anti, the mayor called me about an anti-Semitic resolution, but to include BDS, or to include what's going on in Israel in this resolution at all, until this library situation happened. We didn't want it, we didn't even think about it. But that's what happened here. That's how it started, that's the genesis of this, and hopefully tonight's the conclusion of it. And the reason for the BDS thing, and why we are so impassioned about it, is because if you look at various different organizational works on BDS, including from all different Jewish agencies and organizations, BDS is dangerous to the Jewish community, not because of Israel. Israel is doing pretty well without any anti-BDS resolution. BDS is heard in the Jewish community because it comes back as anti-Semitism in the communities in the diaspora, in Europe, and here in America, on college campuses, and in our streets. BDS is dangerous to us, and it's anti-Semitic, and that's why we are so impassioned about it. But now we passed the resolution. Now it's time to move on. I was a little discouraged tonight when a clergy member got up here and said, because you're going to pass this resolution, he is now going to encourage a whole worldwide campaign here in Highland Park discussing the Palestinian side. There was nothing here that, that necessitates that. The Palestinian side, as far as what's going on over there in Israel and Palestine, or whatever you want to call it, has nothing to do with Borough of Highland Park. Tonight's vote was simply on anti-Semitism. I would hope he would reconsider. I would hope he would engage in dialogue before going on a campaign that could further divide the community. It's time now to move on. It's time for the community to move on, it's time for, to repair the relationships that were broken, it's time to repair, as Councilwoman Elsie Foster Dublin said so eloquently, to bring the community back together, where everybody can speak to each other, and we can live happily ever after in Highland Park. I'm hoping for that, I hope everybody here on the council hopes for that, I hope everybody still in the room hopes for that, and I hope we can now move forward and live our lives in a whole different way. Thank you again for passing this resolution.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, today, oh, Chabefriderich, 62 Grand Avenue. Today you just passed words. They resolve about what we care about in Highland Park, that we're not experts here. So what are we going to do? We're going to adopt the one internationally recognized definition of anti-Semitism, and we're going to use it. That's the only thing that we passed, and yes, we'll educate too, while we're doing that. The fact that that's controversial, the fact that it's decisive, is exactly why we needed to do it. We wouldn't have had to do it if we hadn't been targeted by people who are anti-Jewish under the guise of just being anti-Israel. And I really appreciate all of you with your diverse opinions, coming together to support the Jewish community in Highland Park. I hope this is the end of this discussion. I hope that there are no more incidents, I hope that JVP and other BDS organizations decide we're not worth it, they'll go somewhere where they get less trouble. Again, I know I've brought this up, but there's a lot of people here, and I think it's important that we kind of have the awareness of how this has changed. When you combined the working session with this meeting, it took away an opportunity for public comment. I have sat through multiple of these working sessions now, and I think you bring up some really important issues, things that are very relevant to our community, and things that we should have the ability to comment on, and not just two weeks or a month later in the summer. I don't, I know you're concerned about time limits. I know that a lot of these meetings have gone long and have been very tiring for you. The fact of the matter is, most people don't stay, and you guys know that it is very rare that people stay. And if they stay and they put the time in to wait, I think there should be a public comment, even if it's devoted just to those topics. Clearly, you are able to limit certain public comments to certain areas of the agenda. I think it's limiting the public interaction, and I think the role, your role should be to allow for more public interaction. I know, again, it's tiring and late for you, but every time I've stayed, there's been some really important discussions, and sometimes, mostly I have no comments about them, because it's not necessarily something I can weigh into, but sometimes there's some people in the public who should have the ability to weigh in and give some feedback, especially if they've stayed that late now that it is even in here. So I wanted to bring that again to you, reconsider that session of the public comment, and also let people here know that, you know, if you are going to stay, you won't have that opportunity, and you would have to then wait for, I guess, the next meeting, or catch people individually. So, again, I'm bringing that to you to reexamine.
Thank you.
Anna Haley, 135 North 5th Avenue. I know I've gotten familiar with some of you as being rather energetic at meetings and public comment sometimes, and I don't have that in me. What I, what I have is a sense of heartsickness over my community, and that you all, in spite of capturing in your comments before the vote, a lot of weight, and difficulty, and uncertainty, and conflict, the heartsickness of your decisions to reify, to institutionalize profound disagreement in our community. And I go home tonight being very reflective of what I know about my community, and what it now means to me. And I will remain hopeful going forward that it is a place where I do want to have my children, and I live and thrive. That is not how I'm feeling tonight. And I thank my neighbor Judy for her comments wedged in earlier. In that context, I am extra weighty about something that I've understood. Perhaps I'm incorrect, that there is a proposal to dismantle or devolve the very new Highland Park Equity Commission, as well as the commission related to immigrants and refugee affairs into mere committees. We had a unusually engaged and high voter turnout primary election that I believe was driven largely by community concerns about transparency of governance in our town, and about community engagement. And the notion that amidst utterly unresolved, even unnamed to date, issues around police racial profiling in our town, and a commission that was just founded as a portion, and really the only main response, other than a few police officers being trained in implicit bias, from what I understand, and a very incomplete, from a social science perspective, report that was well-intended, but leaves most questions unaddressed, the notion that we are now barely a year into that commission, leaving spots of, that are willingly wanting to be filled by community members who are well-qualified and dedicated, leaving those spots unfilled, and devolving those important groups into even less meaningful avenues for community engagement, is galling to me, especially on the night when we have taken this other dramatic step in a very different direction. And I would encourage you not only to reconsider and open this discussion to the community in a meaningful way about how we structure community engagement in our governance, but that, yeah, I would welcome that. I'm sorry, I'm not even articulate tonight. I hope for a sea change, and I don't think it's coming, but I think we can do so much better. We can do much better than we did tonight, and with this, we can do much better in terms of meaningfully naming and addressing these issues in our community. Thank you.
Mark Herman, North 8th Avenue.
She was the fifth person? Are we out of time? Fifteen minutes?
It's nine seventeen, so.
Okay. Do we, what do you want to do? Do anybody want to extend, or no? So it's just three people standing on? Are you online, you two? No. It's three people, so it's another nine minutes. Okay, everybody okay with that? Counsel?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mark Herman, North 8th Avenue, Highland Park. I submitted written comments to my friends who are council members, and I appreciate the fact that you took an affirmative step to adopt the resolution tonight. I'm hoping that this is one of a long pattern that we are going to engage in, in discussion and education. I hope that we find ourselves in a better place with less hostility, less antisemitism, less rife, and less discord. And I hope that we don't only focus on this, an issue that concerns the Jewish community, but that we address all issues of division and discord, regardless of race, color, creed, or ethnicity. And once again, thank you for taking your time, and I yield the balance.
Jeremy Safran, 1009 South Park Avenue, Highland Park. First and foremost, I really want to thank the council and all the work and consideration you've put into this. And I wanted to thank some very meaningful words. I think it's really sad, the state that we need resolutions to resolve against hate against particular groups, one by one. But unfortunately, that's the world, and hopefully this will continue, this conversation will continue. I just also, you know, it was poured up, why Israel, why BDS is important to me, and there's many issues here, as the father of children of color. But on this, growing up as the only Jew in a community where I grew up, the confluence and the mixing up of anti-Israel and anti-Jewish sentiment was very clear. And I also remember the arguments when Rhodesia became Zimbabwe, and it was sad to see. And today, if, I don't think you or anybody would argue that Zimbabwe is a perfect country, but if somebody, if there were a movement out there, God forbid, of people who said that it should be returned to being Rhodesia, we would hopefully stand up and say, no. And we'd say, that's not an acceptable movement, and we would speak against it. So, you know, hopefully we can come to a point where these conversations are more on the positive side than on this resolution against things. And again, I just wanted to say thank you.
Andrew Getreer, 801 South 2nd Avenue. And I just wanted to say thank you, because I know it's been really difficult. And I know that even though it's a unanimous vote, doesn't mean that there's a unanimity of feeling about the vote, but I want you to know that I really think you did the right thing. It's not solving everything, but it was the right thing. It was the best that you could do right now. And I just want to pledge to you that the education efforts, which you now have to really take the center, take the spotlight, for all the different communities in Highland Park, I want to pledge to you that I want to be part of that. And I want to help the Jewish community to educate and be educated, and I want to be a more united Highland Park community. And I think you've taken a step that will get us there. So thank you very, very much.
Andrew, I'm going to take you up on that unity pledge.
Mayor, before you close, we close.
I wasn't going to close, but go ahead.
We talked tonight about hate, but I want to end on a note of asking for each and every one of you to make a phone call. And the United States is 243 years old, and it was built on the backs of slaves. Emmett Till was a sixteen-year-old boy that was lynched, tortured, and really, that's what started the civil rights movement and bring awareness to where we are, who, what was going on in the country at the time. And I felt that, as black people, we didn't get freed until the 60s, when the voice was here, we had support. And with that, I'm not going to go on and on and on. But this week in Congress, they finally passed a no lynching law. Finally. My request is that this is going to go in front of the president. And if you can, each and every one of you can make phone calls and say, please, sign this into law. It needs to be a federal law that no more lynching. I humbly ask that of each of you.
And that's a great segue to what I was going to say. This has been a difficult journey for many of us in Highland Park, from all walks of life and all points of view. The one thing that I ask of each and every one of you is to have your neighbors' backs. We passed an antisemitism resolution tonight. Last year, or a few years ago, we passed an immigrant and refugee and fair welcoming I hope that you feel safer with this resolution, and that you will help make your neighbors feel safer. When someone attacks your African-American neighbor, stand up, don't turn around. When someone goes after a woman in town because she's wearing his job, speak up. Don't let people go after her. When a young man in our farmer's market is told to speak English, and his mother, don't let people do that to these residents. If they want to speak their home language to one another, they should. So please, stand up for every one of our neighbors. That's what I hope comes out of all of this. Thank you. I am appointing the following. Norma Vargas Greenberg to the Human Relations Commission. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, the councilwoman, oh, roll call. I'm sorry.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, the governing body will now take a five-minute recess and go into our work session to discuss future items.